In the deliberation, in the management of our city, we pray that we will conduct ourselves with integrity, dignity, and care and respect of each other. We bless your name for this privilege tonight, and let us honor you by the way we conduct ourselves, in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Here.
Blackwell.
Here.
Jordan.
Here.
Watkins.
Here.
Rogers.
Here.
Bullock.
Here.
And Mallon.
Here.
Amen. I don't know if they have enough agendas over here, or the hogs over there, and so hopefully you picked them up. If you didn't have enough, hopefully you can share it with your neighbor. We are on item number four. This is a prelude of our minutes on the registered schedule meeting at City Council, which was held on April twenty-second, two thousand nineteen. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? If not, then that's standing submitted to you. We do have item five, a couple of presentations and acquisitions. One of them is a presentation of a proclamation proclaiming the week of May nineteenth through twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen as Public Works Week in the City of Rocky Mount. And we're gonna present this amen to Public Works Director Brad Carr and Water Resources Director Brenton Bennett. And again, this is across the country, I think, this week, we're celebrating Public Works, and so that this heat of Rocky Mount cannot be provided to the community without the dedicated, excuse me, efforts and unwavering commitment of the Public Works and Water Resources Professionals responsible for planning, designing, building, operating, maintaining, and managing the transportation network, stormwater system, the water supplier, the water and wastewater treatment plants, the water and wastewater distribution and collection systems, maintenance of the city's motor vehicle and equipment fleet, the delivery of solid waste services, and minimum housing code and nuisance avoidance enforcement, which are essential to service for all citizens. So, at this time, it's a very lengthy one, I won't read it all, but I'd ask Brad Carr and Brenton to come down. Yeah, a lot of what they do, we just take Brad until your water doesn't work, your people across, and it doesn't work, crashes, pick up, so we're happy they do a good job here in Rocky Mount. So, we want to congratulate them.
Smile, nod your head, three, two, hold it, one more, three, two.
Thank you.
Let's give him a round of applause.
I got some.
You've got one presentation, I might ask May Parker to come on up here. A lot of you know her name. You wanna know what's going on in Rocky Mount last night? She's already involved, but what we wanna do is recognize her tonight, and this is in recognition of twenty-eight years of commitment to the Keep Up America Beautiful Advisory Board of Nash and Edstone Counties as the City of Rocky Mount at-large member for twenty-eight years, and I think that's special. Gentlemen, I thank May for her service, and again, that's a great organization, and that leadership issue, and that's a big organization that helps us to deal with that, so thank you. At this time, we're gonna move to item number six, this is petitions to be received from the public, a statement, and then we've got a number of people that would like to come up at this time. And this is the public portion of our meeting. If you'd like to address the council, and if you didn't sign up, we have some sign-up sheets. Any comment should be directed to the council as a whole, not to individual council members or city staff. It is your opportunity to raise a question or present a request to the council, however, in most cases, members will not respond immediately to the public, but may refer the matter to the city manager or staff for follow-up. We ask you to come to the podium in a civil, non-argumentative and respectful manner. Personal attacks which have a potential to disrupt the meeting will not be tolerated. Time is monitored, and so we'll give you about three minutes, and we'll give you a heads-up in about two and a half minutes. So, at this time, since you're on top of this, May, you can come on up.
To the mayor and each of you City Council persons, as the mayor just said, I'm all over town, and it's very sad that our people are disturbed in our city. We cannot have our city without our citizens. No matter where you go, they're talking about the condition in the state of our city. So, I thought, well, the United States of America is now in a constitutional crisis, so we are in a community citizen crisis here. So, I hope, and my days are getting shorter, that each of you will make a decision to make our city better. I would like to see that done before the end of my life. Thank you so very much.
Nehemiah Smith, sixteen-twenty East Virginia Street, and then after Nehemiah, Warren Alters.
Good evening. The American South is known for many rare and peculiar things, especially when it comes to its contribution to language and the great American lexicon. Southern colloquialisms are of particular interest to me, but I am even more fascinated by the colorful and sometimes humorous idioms that find their origins in the South. One such idiom is the one that refers to canines that refuse to or do not have the ability to track prey, more specifically, that dog won't hunt. In days of more neo-territorial ventures, as I say, recently, our fair city has seen an influx of pseudo-hunting dogs. First, there was the manufactured issues hound, that dog wouldn't hunt. Then the carnival barker hound, that dog wouldn't hunt. Then there are the non-resident and singing the drunk debutante hounds, made a lot of noise, but ultimately, they wouldn't hunt. So, the decision was made to go blue-blood and get an independent investigation hound. Early reports saw that that dog not only wouldn't hunt, but couldn't hunt. And as in the tradition of the inexperienced gotcha hunter, instead of going somewhere and sitting down, he changes the narrative and is now waiting on the state auditor hound to hunt. And knowing best would as I do, when that dog refuses to hunt, you'll know, because you won't even get a report. All these pseudo-hunting dogs remind me of the old Gilly Preston song, "Nothing for nothing leaves nothing." So, let's roll up our sleeves and get back to the good work of doing what is best for all citizens in Rocky Mount. As for the dogs that won't hunt, stop feeding them, and they'll stop again.
Happy morning to Clark Cunnell, two-nine-hundred, Breston Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, and our city staff. I've been waiting for a little while, did you miss me? I'm a citizen of Rocky Mount, and I'm happy to be here, I'm actually very proud to be here. I was tempted to spend my allotted time addressing what you're calling the veteran's parking gate, and the utter lack of decorum and lapses in judgment by a certain leader, but that's a morals issue. It's an argument on what's legal versus what's right. I'm quite certain the audit results released today will be fairly similar. Nothing blatantly illegal, but not necessarily examples of servant leadership either. Just like parking in a spot reserved for someone else, it's not technically illegal, but it doesn't make it right. But I digress. Instead of dwelling on that, I draw on this week's inspiration from life lessons learned from my mother and my grandparents, and from this week's sermon from the pastor, Luke Lunsford, at First Baptist across the street. I guess I should consider it an honor, be called out recently by a local blogger. This is where the life lesson from my parents comes in. If you can't say something positive, don't say anything at all. So, rather than legitimize a rabble-rouser and let my family down, I'll stay positive. The claim that we are using, quote, "black children" to accomplish our mission, I'm proud to admit that we are partially guilty as charged. The mission we set out to accomplish was to bring a bunch of kids to the ocean for the first time to see it, and guess what? Thirty-eight kids have earned their way, and they'll be departing for that ocean in a few weeks. I tear up every time I think about this project. I started this group called Love Rocky Mount, intending to break down barriers, begin a dialogue among diverse people groups. One simple conversation led to this trip and a fundraising effort to pay for it all. This is just the beginning. Hundreds have joined us on our journey. We have accomplished design work for a logo, it perfectly illustrates our love for Rocky Mount and our desire to bridge the divides that exist within our community. This week, our pastor wrapped up a series of sermons in Jonah. Does our church reflect the compassion of God? We'll ask every week, does our mission of Love Rocky Mount reflect the compassion of God? I truly believe we must all attempt to get along and work together. Recently, I have contacted two members of this council to ask if they would sit down with me and begin dialogue. As of today, no response. I've also reached out multiple times to one of the most prominent ministers in this city for the same idea. As of today, sadly, no response. Tomorrow, I'll make further attempts, including an invitation to you, Mrs. City Manager, to sit down and begin dialogue with people like us, and in closing, citizen of Rocky Mount, hear this, "There will be resistance, but together we shall prevail and make a difference." Remember this, if God is for us, who can be against us? Through Him, we will continue to make a difference. Through Him, we will break down the barriers and we'll bridge divides. We will not let naysayers drag us down. Love, Rocky Mount.
After Clark Cunnell, Samuel Battle, two-sixteen North Street.
How long is the report?
Excuse me?
The next approved report, how long is the report?
Well, they're gonna present it today, I've overlooked it, so we'll discuss that when we get to that.
Have you all read the report yet?
We're seeing the final results today.
Will we be able to get like a print copy of the report when everything's said and done?
I'll look at our attorney and ask him.
Well, the council will look at the report, a written version, and I think their intention is to release something. It's up to the council.
Okay.
Same to Battle, and then Jule T. Williams, I think it's Williams.
Good evening. My first concern is about Martin Luther King Park. We got twenty feet, twenty foot something over at the park. We would like for y'all to close the park down for someone, with no kids, nobody get hurt. I just found out over the weekend, y'all had a dump truck at a landfill flip door because y'all was digging at the park, y'all was getting concrete and steel. So, I'm just, I just want the park shut down, a couple is wanting the park shut down at Martin Luther King Park. Y'all can make that happen, that's fine with me. Second issue is the shooting that hit us there. It's current on Charlie, Charlie Drive and Cherry Street. Well, you know, we got a City Council, we'll stay there. We need police and everything there. If you stay there, you need to, you need to handle this situation, sir. You really, you need to handle this situation. We got shooting for the last three weeks, you can go to the police department on the dispatch, they'll, they'll holler at you about that. Number two, I mean, number three, the last one, we had CSS, G.K. Butterfield, I gotta send his own, great man, gave me probation, Ron Cooper, North Carolina, the governor, Democrat. What pissed me off about this situation, man, we had one, two, three, four, the City Councils didn't even show up for that. We got fifteen hundred jobs coming, and none of you showed up. Departures of a million and five, one million, I mean, a hundred fifty-eight million dollars project, and y'all didn't show up for that.
Should've asked if we all got invited.
Yeah, invited, you ain't gotta get invited. You ain't had to get invited.
Go ahead, listen.
But you're speaking for everybody, Ruth. You said everybody.
I said the person we should ask is too many.
Oh, okay, my fault. But I'm just saying, somebody should've showed up, you know? I don't even understand, everybody looking around like we going at our people like that. But I'm going at you because right is right and wrong is wrong at the end of the day. If you're not doing what you're supposed to, then step aside. Please step aside, because this, this war that we're going to is really about to get real heat. It's really about to get real heat. And like I told Kenea, I mean, Kenea Denson, don't ever put nothing to me on Facebook or on page, or kids, or nothing, it's gonna be a problem. So, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not playing that, I don't even play that. At the head of the sack, the NWA CP, I don't play no type of game, so don't come at me like that, 'cause if you do, it's gonna be a problem.
Thirty seconds.
All right?
Yeah.
You're on my time, you're on my time, sir.
Excuse me, I'll talk.
No, you're on my time. You're on my time, I ain't finished it, you said thirty seconds.
Thirty seconds.
All right? Well, I'm just telling you, y'all need to get this situation straight. Now, if you got something to say, you know, Drew, we can go outdoors. You know, I don't even care about that, because I'm not that long.
Mr. Battle.
I'm just telling you.
Mr. Battle.
Yeah, I'm just telling you. That's how I feel. Yeah.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, sir. Can I, can I say this, that we ask for no personal attacks, we ask for no name-calling in the process, and we would appreciate it if you could conduct yourself that way as you address the issues. Thank you.
I just wanna say, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate it as we conduct ourselves in a manner that's respectful, that when personal attacks take place, that you would take your authority and rule that person out of order. And if you do that, then we would have to speak.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for your work. I wanted to speak again on the proposed housing, as we previously discussed, and just share that I, as a citizen of Rocky Mount, am in full support of that, with the environmental concerns fully investigated and cleared, and having just completed the excellent Citizens Academy offered by the City of Rocky Mount, I have complete faith in our leadership, in our leaders of the various departments, and I learned a lot. And I encourage other citizens who sometime maybe take some misinformation and kind of go with it to confirm and even maybe participate in our wonderful academies that are offered, the Citizens Academy, the Police Academy, the Fire Department Academy. That way, you can learn who the leaders are, how much they love this city, how much they love their jobs, and the fine work that they do for us. It seems some Rocky Mount citizens may be a little anxious about their fault. Please consider the big picture. Everybody needs to consider the big picture and the future, and think about Rocky Mount in twenty years, with people of various backgrounds, living, working, and playing in downtown Rocky Mount. I can see it. I've been away ten years, and I came back, and I've seen changes that have impressed me, and I just hope and pray that others can see it with me. Thank you.
After Ms. Cole is Dr. Adrian Wood.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I guess my comments, they're about affordable housing as well, and I guess I would put them in the form of a status report, it's not a complaint or an attack. I'm speaking from the perspective of fourteen under-resourced neighborhoods that exist in this city. In two thousand fourteen, the city commissioned a housing study, and it ranked neighborhoods on the basis of investment quality, and we have fourteen impoverished, racially segregated neighborhoods that have experienced disinvestment for a long period of time, and I live in one of them. I live in the Downings Community neighborhood. I'm speaking tonight because I don't know if any of you saw it, but there was a big story in the Sunday edition of the News and Observer about action being considered in Raleigh and Durham for the proposal of a housing law to address a housing affordability crisis in that, those communities. We have a housing affordability crisis right here in Rocky Mount. The News and Observer story pointed to the number of cost-burdened residents in Durham and in Raleigh. I would like to mention to you tonight that over thirty-seven percent of families in our city are cost-burdened, meaning that they're spending over thirty percent of their income on housing costs. We are very encouraged by the conversations we're having with executive leadership under the supervision of our city manager. We have been engaged in conversation, and we residents in the fourteen neighborhoods have banded together, and we're making recommendations to the city. We look to you to join with us in partnership. We're not here to attack or to criticize, we're asking for partnership to uplift these neighborhoods so that all of us can have a better quality of life, and we recommend that you look at terms like inclusive, addressing inequities, and equitable development in the revitalization of our city. I'd like to conclude by saying that we residents are willing to work with you to carry some of the burden, we don't look just to you all to solve the problems in our neighborhoods, but we do wanna be a good partner and good citizens of this town. Thank you for listening.
I'm Dr. Adrian Wood. Democracy cannot endure without an informed electorate. I was born and raised in Rocky Mount, called Nash County home. My parents moved here in a six-foot youth hall that was half-full in nineteen seventy-one. I love my hometown. I live in Eaton now, Chilwell County, and recently, last week, I came back because my parents' house was robbed, and I just had the best experience with the police department. I just couldn't say how diligent and helpful they've been. And while I was there, I thought, you know, I'm gonna go up and visit the city manager, I've been writing and reading a lot of things, I'm gonna go take a look. And I go up there, and she calls the police on me, which is interesting, 'cause I'd just been talking to them, and, you know, I'm forty-four, graduated from Chapel Hill, Meredith, NC State, I've never had the police call on me. I'm white, but should that matter when I care about my town or leaders? I don't align myself with people that look like me. I want people that give a crap about what's going on here. That's all. That's all I want. And then all these people, they're showing up here tonight, and they're saying, you know what? I care, because Rocky Mount was awesome. I mean, when I was little, it was the city on the rise, and now, it's the city of demise. I just, I'm so tired of it, and I hope that people are willing to listen and think about everybody, and don't pit races against races to cause problems, because it shouldn't be a problem. It's not a problem to me, and I believe in Rocky Mount, and I believe that people can run and do the jobs that they were hired to do or elected to do, and I have faith in the council that she'll come next. Thank you.
Niflin Orr, and then Johnny Cunningham. Niflin is at seventeen thirteen Beverly Road, and Johnny is, I believe, at five forty-eight. Natalie, I'm sorry for that.
Good evening, your honorable mayor, and our esteemed City Council, and our most gracious city manager. My name is Natalie O'Beal. I am the third vice president of the Rocky Mount branch of the NWA CP. The mission of the NWA CP is to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all persons, and to eliminate racial hatred and racial discrimination. Over the years, the NWA CP has followed these guiding principles and will continue to do so. Today, the NWA CP is the most respected civil rights organization in the country. I come to you to express my hope that the citizens of this fair city will realize that this is a new day in the life of our city. We have a new generation of college graduates who are seeking new and improved jobs and affordable housing, and yes, we want to encourage our council to please move forward on behalf of our citizens, young and old. And as a resident of Edstone side of Rocky Mount, I am looking forward to improving the pride on my side. Thank you.
May Parker, I commend you for your humble, loyal service, loving, caring service to our city. I remember you, hey, I got here thirty years ago, you're part of the first person I met, and always been inspired by your drive for the betterment of our community and our city. I just want you to know that I love you and thank you for your service for our community.
I was described as a pit bull, cute and cuddly, but yet watching because he'll turn on him. You know what? That old pit bull went over in the corner, and he just laid there for a while. Little old dog, all these hunting dogs, one you have to very, the one you have to pay attention to is the one that went over and laid down in the corner. He done all the hunting, all the running, all the training, he done heard shot guns, and he done drunk in a river, and got the duck, got the decent, drove him back to Alaska, and he got tired. He went over there and he laid in that corner, and he stopped kicking on that old dog, and that dog said, okay, what am I gonna do about this? What am I gonna do? They just, I went over there and I laid down in this corner. So, now, this old dog is back, and guess what? He ain't by himself, but he's back for one reason. It's the same reason twenty-five years ago I stood here. And yes, we want to encourage our council to please move forward on behalf of our citizens, young and old. And as a resident of Edson side of Rocky Mount, I am looking forward to improving the pride on my side. Thank you.
May Parker, I commend you for your humble, loyal service, loving, caring service to our city. I remember you, the day I got here thirty years ago, you're part of the first person I met, and always been inspired by your drive for the benefit of our community and our city. I just want you to know that I love you and thank you for your service for our community. Described as a pit bull, cute and cuddly, but yet watching because he'll turn on him. You know what? That old pit bull went over in the corner, and he just laid there for a while. Little old dog, all these hunting dogs, one you have to very, the one you have to pay attention to is the one that went over and laid down in the corner. He done all the hunting, all the running, all the training. He done heard shot guns, and he done drunk in a river and got the duck, got the decent, drove him back to the last one, and he got tired. He went over there and he laid in that corner. Then he stopped kicking on that old dog. That dog said, okay, what am I going to do about this? What am I going to do? They just, I went over there and I laid down in his corner. So now, this old dog is back, and guess what? He ain't by himself. But he's back for one reason. It's the same reason twenty-five years ago I stood here, it's for unity. And guess what? All the begging and the pleading and the kicking, finally, our cries were heard, and our pleas fell upon caring, loving, humble strangers. You know what Scripture says? Beware of how you entertain strangers, because some have entertained angels unaware. And for someone to, Mr. Dance, have the audacity to say that I use poor black kids for political purposes, then we all know what he eat, you got my third sentence. Okay? I want to thank Love Rocky Mount, because if not for Love Rocky Mount, you see the new man? He wouldn't be here today. I'd be cursing and cussing, but that one left shot of my show, he had fit, so that's what he got fit. But because of love, zip to me, and I thank Love Rocky Mount, because without them, I would not be able to stand here today and say unity is going to prevail, and love is going to stay. Thank you.
Jackie King to 122 Daniels Avenue, and then it looks like Selat, Mohammed.
Good evening, citizens, mayor, city manager, city clerk, council. As fore stated, I am Jackie King, and I reside in the Battleberg community, which is in the city of Rocky Mount. Tonight, I am representing the Rocky Mount branch of the NAACP, where I serve as the first vice chair. The mission has been fore stated, but I'm going to repeat. The mission of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People is to secure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights in order to eliminate race-based discrimination and ensure the health and well-being of all persons. The vision is of the NAACP is to ensure a society in which all individuals have equal rights without discrimination based on race. With that being said, I've also worked in the Superior and the Community Academy about workforce housing. We, the citizens of the Slade and White Communities, are taking the stand to support those members of the Rocky Mount City Council who are interested in improving the quality of life in our neighborhoods. We care about the workforce housing development. We care about affordable housing development. We care about the Atlantic Arts and Corridors Study. We care about the John Scum, the Edson County. We care about downtown development. We care about the success of the Rocky Mount Event Center. We care about our local public school systems. We care about the special Medicare Medicaid. We care about the politics of our local government. We care, and our voices matter. Thank you.
Saladin.
Good evening. I've been here forty years, I'm Saladin Mohammed. And in this forty years, Rocky Mount has not been a city on the rise. When you look at the Edson side of Rocky Mount, you can, with good consciousness, say that Rocky Mount has been the city on the rise. Now, if we're honest, I think we would arrive at that conclusion. Let me say this, and I hope you know that, that we critically examine what I'm saying. Almost forty years ago, there had to be a lawsuit in order to address the issue of democracy here in Rocky Mount. Because the community, and particularly the African-American community, did not have the democratic right to vote for people in the wards to be elected. Ever since that suit happened, there's been deep anger by people who are offended because there's some expression of exercising black political power. Black political power is not opposed to white people. It's addressing the inequities that our communities have experienced all of the time that I've lived in Rocky Mount and when my mother lived in Rocky Mount. And so unless we are willing to unite, to resolve those inequities, to talk about unity means very, very, very love. I'm hearing people saying yes, sir, and yes, ma'am, to me. And I welcome that. You know, years ago, it wouldn't have been yes, ma'am, or yes, sir. But I tell you, our community needs more than good greetings. We need a city council of all genders and races and nationalities to make the tough decisions to address the problems that have really, really kept us divided. And I hope that this city council shows the guts to do that. Thank you.
That is the end of the public petitions from the public, which was item number six. We are going to move on to item number seven, that is a report from, as we know, a number of months ago, that we, as a result of some issues that were defied in the paper, and comments from the public, the city council interviewed several companies to come in and do a review, and we selected a company named Nexon Pud, and Pud, and they're here tonight to go over those findings that they have. I would tell you that this is just the first step from the city council. We did not gotten the finalized report, but we did not want to keep this process going any longer than we had to, so tonight we're doing that. They'll get a final report to our city attorney. He'll review that, and then the city council will need to say where the next steps would be in terms of the results of this report. So tonight, it's a short presentation that they want to present, give you some background of themselves, the process that they went through, and then a general overview at this point in time. So I'm going to turn it over to Ken Lewis, one of the partners.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, members of the City Council, my name is Ken Lewis. I am a member of the law firm of Nexon Pud. I'm here today with my colleague, Bridget Lynn Spears. Nexon Pud is a hundred-and-nine-person law firm based in South Carolina, with offices throughout North and South Carolina. We have a broad-based business practice, and our practice includes working with municipalities and state government. As the mayor mentioned, we were requested by the mayor on behalf of the city council to conduct a review of the city manager earlier this year. Tonight, we will present a summary of our review. There were six basic items that we were asked to review. The items were city morale, turnover, hiring practices, compensation, financial management, HUD. And during the course of our review of these items, we identified two additional items, human resources and perception of bias, that became the subject of our investigation and report. The process that we went through was to interview sixty-five witnesses. Those interviews were over a hundred-and-fifty hours of intense interviews. The interviews were of the city manager, began with the city manager and ended with the city manager. We interviewed each of the city council members. We interviewed the lead team, middle managers, supervisors, non-supervisory employees. We were given a list of interviewees by the city council and the city manager, and we attempted to speak with each of them. We made at least three attempts to speak with each of those identified witnesses and reached most of them. Witnesses were also identified through an email correspondence that went out, followed by a Facebook correspondence, inviting potential witnesses to come forward. We vetted and interviewed those witnesses. And there was also a hotline that the city had active, members called, or witnesses or potential witnesses called through the hotline, and as we identified topics that were relevant to our review, we also interviewed those witnesses. The interviews were conducted by a team of lawyers led by Bridget Lynn Spears. Bridget is a seasoned and accomplished employment and labor lawyer. She, along with a team of lawyers, interviewed each of these witnesses and compiled a report, the summary of which we will give this evening. So I will turn this over to Bridget to give you the summary of our report.
Thank you, Ken. Hey, everybody. So I'm going to walk through the conclusions that we have on each of these topics in the order that Ken just presented them in, and then we'll take time for questions if you have them at the end. So these findings are based on, as Ken said, the sixty-five interviews that we did with witnesses, and they're at a very high level, in part to protect the anonymity of the people that spoke with us. They were promised confidentiality by the city council and the city manager, and so we've worked hard to protect that anonymity and confidentiality in this process. So with respect to morale, we found kind of three categories of things that corresponded roughly to sort of the levels of employees that we spoke with. So the frontline and low-level employees that we spoke with, not exclusively but primarily, felt pretty heard and included. Their responses were relatively positive to these morale questions, and we spoke with several people that would fit into this category. Middle management described feeling excluded and disconnected, and when we spoke with the city manager about that, she acknowledged that as a weakness that she's working on addressing. So that was pretty consistent with middle management, that they sort of feel like they don't fall into this heard and included category, and then they're also not part of the lead team, so they're not regularly interacting with the top levels of city leadership. And then from senior management, we heard very mixed reports, but the majority, and it would, I would say a slight majority, of the lead team reported low morale. And so then we want to talk about what is, what's kind of underlying those findings as far as the people who feel like there's high morale, why do they feel that way? And the people who feel like there's low morale, why do they feel that way? So low morale, we saw impacted by the rumor that has been circulated about a list, and that has its own slide, and we'll talk about that next. And then also resistance to change in management and direction and style, like in a lot of these kinds of reviews over the course of my career, and that's really common, that we see when you have new management, that there's some tension and resistance to change, and we definitely heard that. And we also heard about some communication challenges that between the city manager and some of the people that she's communicating with, that there are some challenges in that communication. The people who described high morale to us talked about opportunities to interact directly with upper management, and we didn't hear, we heard kind of the opposite of those communication concerns there, that people felt like their voices were heard and that they had the opportunity to bring their concerns to the city manager and to the higher levels of city government, that they were heard. And then they also felt like there was a tension to longstanding concerns around equality, particularly with respect to career opportunities, that they didn't feel like had had as much attention as they deserved in the past, and they felt like they were starting to see that attention now. So we want to talk about this list rumor, because we heard about it a lot from witnesses, particularly witnesses that were talking to us about low morale. So what we found in talking to people is that the rumor of the list predated the newspaper report. So this rumor has been circulating for quite some time. The original version of the rumor had fewer people on it. It listed only Mr. Jesso, Mr. Warsinger, Mr. Boone, and Mr. Kerr. We didn't find any substantiation of this rumor whatsoever. So we talked to a lot of people about where they heard it, who they heard it from. We traced it as far as we could. And primarily, in looking at a rumor like this, and you look to see sort of, okay, where did it come from, and then also, what is, is it actually coming true? So there are two people who are on that original list who are no longer here. Their departures were voluntary, and we've talked to a number of witnesses about those departures. We'll address those a little bit more in detail in a few minutes. And then, but we also found that the rumor itself, despite its lack of substantiation, has done really significant damage to morale in the city. We found in particular that Mr. Boone's departure and the discussions around that departure, we heard from lots of people that he was concerned about that rumor and talking about that rumor both before and after the newspaper publication. And so the impact of his departure sort of increased the damage that was being done by the rumor of that list. So turnover. We want to provide the context here, and again, in the context of having practiced employment law for a significant number of years, turnover is common when there's a significant change at the top of an organization. And we also noted in working through that the city manager hasn't terminated anybody's employment. And so actually, that's uncommon in connection with this kind of a change. We often see sort of conflicts that aren't resolved well, and that city managers or other people in the top of organizations do take that kind of action. There were two city managers who departed for larger cities at similar pay. We confirmed what those pay differences were in the public records to make sure that we were hearing accurate information about that. We did hear from one department head, who we've talked about, who attributed his departure to his belief in the list rumor, and that he was purportedly listed on that, on that purported list. And then there were also concerns particularly around the community development department. That department, in talking to people who are familiar with it, has experienced significant turnover that predates the recent change in city leadership and the recent change in its own leadership. And so we talked to a lot of different people about that who've been familiar with that department for a long time. So hiring, the primary, the primary concern we heard about here was, is there race bias going on in the city manager's hiring practices? We found no substantiation of race bias in connection with hiring practices. The city manager has hired a diverse group of candidates from both a race and gender standpoint, and more importantly, she articulates reasonable business-related reasons for each hire unrelated to their protective characteristics. So we worked through that, because as an employment lawyer, I'm familiar with how these kinds of claims evolve if somebody brings them. And so you examine somebody's thought process on how they came to a decision to hire somebody by asking about their reasons. And articulating business-related reasons for a hire that's unrelated to protective characteristics is an important part of that evaluation. We also heard from, over and over again, from frontline employees that the city manager is addressing ongoing concerns regarding race bias that they see in historical hiring and promotion practices, and they feel very positively about that attention. Compensation, the city, as you know, is currently engaged in a pay classification study. The last one was performed a decade ago. And so what we heard from folks that we talked to about this is that your pay in the city is not competitive for key positions from the perspective of the people who are looking at whether or not they want to take those positions. The city ordinance allows some discretion by the city manager in connection with hiring, and we didn't find any instances or hear of any specifics in which the city manager had exceeded her authority in hiring people. Financial management, we looked into some particular things that were raised by witnesses as we talked through them, and we also talked through some of those concerns with the city manager. The spending on the city manager's office was mentioned early, and it came up in a few interviews, and we determined that that, as you all know, that spending was approved by the city council, and also the spending came in under budget. And so I think the concerns around that are more about prioritization than by any kind of malfeasance on the part of the city manager. Most witnesses who had concerns about financial management were focused on disagreement with prioritization. We heard sort of a lot of different priorities than what they're hearing from the city manager, but nobody really had significant concerns about financial management that were different from those prioritization concerns. And we didn't find any evidence that the city manager had failed to obtain city council approval when it was required. In fact, sometimes we found that there was approval sought when it is not required. In fact, sometimes we found that there was approval sought when it is not required. So the other, the kind of final point that we were initially asked to look into was HUD. As you all know, the city of Rocky Mountain was subject to an audit in 2013 and has since been subjected to numerous subsequent desk monitoring reviews. That's quite common. Once a federal agency starts paying attention to you, then they tend to keep paying attention to you. And so in connection with a review of fiscal year 2015, which was a significant time before you had any change in your city government as it currently stands, there was an August 2018 review of those practices that resulted in the return of $178,000-plus dollars. And in connection with that review, the city has implemented new policies, procedures, worksheets, and checklists, and then additional annual monitoring of the Rocky Mountain Edgemont County Community Development Corporation, which was required by HUD, and those processes are now in place. So the primary thing that I would say about HUD in conclusion here is that these kinds of concerns are likely to keep coming up, at least until HUD gets through to the part where your policies, procedures, and worksheets and checklists that have been implemented are in place and protecting you from those kinds of problems that resulted in the return of this money going forward. So you have some fiscal years they have not looked at that could still result in similar issues. So the other things that we heard were just things that were raised by witnesses as we walked through. You know, is there anything else that you're concerned about or that you want us to look into? And so we heard some concerns about the human resources, or the human resources department, particularly, as I mentioned before, concerns around racial bias in hiring and promotion practices, and then historical concerns with the effectiveness of that department around recruiting, screening, complaints, grievances, and concerns about retaliation when complaints are brought to that department. So we also heard concerns about racial bias in connection with how the city manager manages people, and we were not able to substantiate those concerns. We did substantiate that there is some frustration and directness when the city manager addresses people, and that she's experienced some significant issues with resistance to her direction and incidents even of explicit insubordination by direct reports. And those instances were ones where we heard about them from witnesses, and we were also able to explore them with the city manager without disrupting any confidentiality there. So it's clear that there is some tension with some people on the lead team, and that her frustration and directness are sometimes not well-received by that team. Okay, so that is the summary of what we have found, and we have the answer questions now, or we will, as discussed, provide you with the report.
Any questions at this time? I would tell you that the HUD issue was one of the things that we were going to go over today in our committee. The whole meeting, we're still going to go back into open session after this to our internal auditor, the auditor on that issue, and so she's going to update us tonight on that fully, much fuller than this. And I think one of the questions that I'm sure a lot of people have is that this seems to be a very concise, small report, but in terms of the time and effort and the amount of volume of what we did, can you explain that a little bit, with this anonymity?
Yes, so that, I mean, that is the primary reason for the brevity of the report, is the protection of anonymity, particularly around the concerns with unauthorized disclosure of information, that we need to protect, to talk to us, because we promised that we would. And so in drawing these conclusions, we are drawing on a hundred-and-fifty hours that we spent with people, often with two attorneys in the room, and then kind of streamlined as the process went on, but a lot of time with people, pages and pages and pages of notes, and really distilled down through a careful discussion of what we heard and what we didn't hear, and what we were able to substantiate and what we were not able to substantiate.
So I'm sure one of the questions that has come up in terms of the newspaper articles, and I know you sold copies of those, but you didn't track that item by item?
No, we specifically, in the discussion of how we were going to structure this, prioritized the six things that the city council wanted us to look at, and then what else would be raised by witnesses. So some of those do correlate to things that were reported in the paper, but we certainly did not try to track down every single thing that the paper did.
Any other questions on the council? As one of our speakers alluded to earlier, the state auditor still has an investigation going on. We don't know what it is, when it will be finished. You know, we are assisting them any way we can at this point in time. So like you said, if nothing comes up, we may not hear a thing from them. But they are still involved in it, and we'll hear from them at some point in time. The other thing I would say is that we're just getting this report. We're getting the final report. Our attorney will review it, and then the council will look at whether, excuse me, what are our next steps at this point in time based on the information. So I want to thank you all. I know you spent a lot of time in Rocky Mountain interviewing people, and again, whether this is what people expected or not, it is what it is. We had an independent company that came in that had no ties to Rocky Mountain, and so we tried to be as open and honest as we could about it and didn't give you any direction at all other than here are the things we're interested in. So council, got any other questions? If not, thank you, and we're going to move on to item number eight. Thank you. Since we are going to be going back into open session, committee room, we're going to move on. Item number eight is the consent agenda. This has A is consideration of all the last typical closings. This is for Germantown, Telkomsel. This is to close the One Pans and Block of New Street to the 1500 block of Loom Brook Street. This is on Sunday, 2/6 and 9/25 for the Germantown celebration. Item two is Steve Yen, he's a city engineer. Street closures for the annual Gentile Community Environment Festival. That is a pretty temporary street closing, so it does require an ordinance adoption from the NCDOT. Temporary closures of North Church Street, West Thomas Street, Morris Road, Gay Street, the North Church Street. Not to read them all, you can read them, but it is for the Gentile community. And then B, there's consideration of fiscal year 2019 project ordinance amendment, increasing appropriations and occupancy tax code. Recommended actions to approve the consent agenda inclusive of the approval of the street closures and adoption of the ordinance. Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item nine is a public hearing. This has to do with the CSX transportation. It's a feasibility study relative to annexation. They are annexing the property that they're going to be operating on into the city. The recommended action is to, one, have an explanation of the feasibility study, which we're going to do for us in a second, and two, acknowledge the receipt of the feasibility study and adopt the ordinance extending the corporate limits. So this time, I will turn it over to Will Dean.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Just on your left side, you'll see a map there of the current city limits as they are for annexation 314 for CSX transportation, the city limits, and then the ETJ is that other area there just to the right side, eastern side of the other track. And those parcels that are annexed in are those that we anticipate annexing to the city of Rocky Mountain, approximately close to, close to almost 500 acres, sixteen parcels adjacent to the Nash Edgemont County side there, the Northern End, the Eastern Side of Pfizer, and further areas down south. Existing land use, primarily undeveloped at this point for anticipation of the connector. A lot of things, there's no persons currently living there. Petition was submitted through the process. Water and sewer is available on site. So we do have the annexation petition, the sufficiency, we're at the feasibility study limits here. No capital improvements are required to serve this annexation. We anticipate they're going to expand service for their use. Any other questions you guys have?
Anybody have questions for Will? If not, I'd entertain a motion to acknowledge the receipt and to adopt the ordinance. So.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Blackwell, second by Councilmember Watkins. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Oh, yes, Mr. Bull.
Just a comment, a question from the public. Now, here, some of them might not understand all of the, what's involved in this, hundreds of acres of land being annexed into the city zone for private reasons. And those dicees chores we've had in a long time. So I'll certainly recommend everyone for us to support this 100%.
We have a motion, a second. Any other comments? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item nine is approved. Item 10 is a consideration of the 2020 budget review work session schedule. I am not going to go over all these dates. I think they've already been sent to you, but it is, anybody who's a member of the public, these are all over the meetings. If you want to come to these meetings down here, they begin on, the next one is going to be May 23rd at four o'clock, is our presentation of our budget or the beginning work session. And then you can see the other dates that we're having meetings. So the recommendation is to approve the 2020 budget review and schedule work sessions.
Who to approve the schedule?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Rogers, second by Councilmember Miller. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item 10 is approved. Item 11 is a consideration of one property acquisition of undeveloped lives relative to Substation 7 rebuild project. Two, compensation to a property owner's lives in it, largely, excuse me, transferred to the city. And the recommended action is to authorize the property acquisition at recommended price. So.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Rogers. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. Item 12, it looks like we're going to defer that for tonight, so we will have that on our next committee of the city council agenda. So we do have one item to add on to the agenda tonight that I just passed out to the council. It has to do with downtown development programming requirements. It is a summary of requested action and acknowledges the critical need for continued and complementary development in downtown near the event center. It authorizes the staff to release a request for qualifications for the proposed public-private partnership development. And so at this point in time, there is a tax there, and it's an explanation. This is for the development of a hotel, retail space of 20,000 square feet, and a minimum of 60 residential condo and apartment units within walking distance of the Rocky Mountain event center, in addition to the parking garage. I think you all have a copy of this. I think the private side of this is close to $28 million, and the public side is around $27 million. Any comments or questions? Excuse me. If not, I need a motion to acknowledge and authorize the staff. So. Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Blackwell. Any, uh, Blackwell, I'm sorry. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. The additional item number 13 is approved. Anything else to come before the council? If not, we are going to go back into our committee review, and again, the report's going to be in the bud, and so thank you for coming tonight, and we are adjourned.